To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note the council's in full attendance and I'll just turn the meeting over to the city manager.
Sir, and just a few remarks and clarifications from last night. One thing that I realized is as we're doing these budgets, we're providing the exact same services we are today, and I realized that last night after Ms. Solis asked about the streets we did. So what we're doing today is still included in the budget for '16, so same services. And then Gilbert has the jail contract dollar amounts that Mr. Alvarez asked for, so if you want to...
You want to do it?
No, no, that's fine. As long as we're going to cover it, that's great.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Okay, that's good. So the other thing too is we went through these and the departments talked about some of their projects. If there's a project that you're interested in having done that we didn't talk about, if you'll just let me know, then I can cost it and we can bring it back at a later date. I know you asked for the paving of the, well, concrete flooring, so I know Colby got a rough estimate on that, we'll get that back to you, and then paving, we'll get those estimates. But if there's any other projects that y'all brought up, we're making notes to bring those numbers back to you. So I think the flooring was a little over a million dollars. He hides, but we'll get that exact to you, so, but just as a reminder, that's kind of why we do this early, so if there's projects not listed, y'all can tell us that. So Tanner is up first tonight. Talk about, and you got the fire handout last night, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Certainly my pleasure to be here this evening and talk to you a little bit about the fire department, our budget going into 2016, and I'll get right into it. Kind of start off with my presentation with this photo. This is a recent commemoration of EMS week 2015, and the reason I start this off like this is it's about the people. It's about our employees, and we sit up here and we're talking about numbers and dollars and benchmarks, but at the end of the day, we've got an incredible group of people that work for us, and we're certainly proud of all that they do. Recently, and I also want to mention this, we recently received a silver award for the mission Lifeline. Last year, we received the bronze, and it's based on numbers, a volume theme, and that has to do with our work in, for STEMI's, which is cardiac-related events, and so we're extremely proud to be recognized by the American Heart Association for the efforts that we do and the benchmarks that we continue to meet on the emergency scenes. Just a quick, the last four STEMI calls, and I'll share this because it's really incredible. The national benchmark goal is 90 minutes from the time someone experiences a cardiac event until the block is actually opened, and the last four times we've had were 53 minutes, 38, 64, and 36. So from the time they call 911 until that block is actually opened, we've had times as low as 36 minutes, and that's, it's awesome. It's, that's a 47-minute average, and it just goes out to the folks that work out there each and every day and how hard they work to achieve these benchmarks that we established for them. Just an overview of our organization, our mission statement, something that we really hold true is our vision, you know, the leader emergency service excellence, and we talk about that with our employees in pretty much everything that we do. Our response and performance benchmarks, and I won't go over all these, but I'll put them back up here for your benefit as a reminder that we continually reach out and challenge our folks to be better at everything that we do. We evaluate everything that we do. We're of the opinion that you can't improve what you don't measure, and so we measure a lot of what we do in an effort to be better in the service that we deliver. Again, looking at some of the critical care, which is our medical and our fire staff benchmarks, again, those are just, and that's certainly not all-inclusive, but that's just a snapshot of some of the measurements that we do. Looking into our personnel for 2016, we'll be looking at 130, I do want to point the picture out in the upper right-hand corner there, that's our firefighter taking a victory lap after winning the pedal race car against the police department. We're certainly proud of that as well, so. I was going to bring the cup up tonight, but I thought that might be a little overboard. So we're looking at 130 personnel in the next year's budget. The only addition is an assistant chief position, so right now, we're budgeted for 129 positions, and you can see in the different divisions how we're staffed. The assistant chief position is, we basically have two personnel, me and our assistant chief, who I didn't introduce, Tracy Fox, standing back here, sitting back here behind me, to run all of our day-to-day operations. We're the only eight to five people that we have, and with the complexity of our organization and the growing and additional station, and the complexity between the EMS and the fire, we really need that additional, you know, administrative position to be able to split those services out and to be able to manage those much more effectively. So we have vetted that through the process with the city manager's office, and so that's included in our budget for this year. Kind of a quick five-year recap of our runs, broken down by fire and EMS. Again, these are not anything new that you haven't seen. We did have a pretty good increase from 13 to 14, about a 7% increase, which was one of our bigger jumps, and we're on pace right now at the same numbers as 2014 at this time of the year. Looking into our actual budget, 81% of our budget is for personnel costs, a little $10.3 million. The maintenance and operations, only maintenance that is needed to operate six different facilities, you know, a little bit over 2.1, and then our capital, which I'll go into a little bit more, is a little under 2, a little over 200,000. Kind of a budget overview from '14 to '15, and then this next fiscal year. The only increase we're taking in any of those line items is for personnel, and of course, that's going to, on another slide, that will talk about the pay program for the firefighters. But in maintenance and operation and capital, we're both, both of those were down a little bit from the prior year, and we're also down in our one-time expenses. Our reoccurring expenses, $252,000 more than last year's budget, again, that's totally attributable to personnel cost. Some of the budget variances, our personnel's gone up by 293,000, and that's our pay program, and also the assistant chief position is figured into that as well. And then our maintenance and operations, down from last year by 28,000, although we did add two additional staff vehicles in this next budget, but we did not purchase any fire apparatus, and so that's why we're seeing that actual decline for this next year. We have seen an uptick in the heating, lighting, whatnot, and also the addition of Station Six that will be onboard here in a few months, and educational development, that number increased. We require all new employees that come to us as a firefighter EMT to go through paramedic school now, so we have seen an increase in that as well as the uniforms. Some of the one-time purchases, and this is obviously changes from year to year, but if y'all remember, last year, we talked about the Lucas CPR devices, and we were trying to outfit every ambulance with one of those devices, and we had one in our budget for this year, and then we were able to get three additional through grants, so we're really proud of that. And so we have four of our ambulances today that are outfitted with that, those devices, so in this next budget, we'll be asking for the additional two. We're also, something new for us is these bunker gear dryers, and one of the things that we have a real hard time doing is keeping our gear clean and it being able to be dried in an efficient, you know, efficient amount of time. It takes about 12 hours to dry them as we use them today. There's a real big push in the fire service. There's a, there's a pretty high rate of cancer amongst firefighters, and it dates back 25, 30 years ago when we just didn't know any better, and so now we decon our gear after every fire, and in doing so, we often have to put wet gear back on because it hasn't had the appropriate amount of time to dry. So this will be a new addition for us, we're really looking forward to seeing, it should go from 12 hours down to an hour and a half, so. We're also looking at an SCBA fill station, so instead of buying an SCBA air compressor, which is very pricey, we're looking at these SCBA fill stations because about two years ago, we were funded with a light and air truck that has an SCBA generator on it. So now we can actually drive that to some of the stations and fill up a cascade system so that they can refill their bottles as opposed to trying to put one of those expensive machines in every station, so.
What's SCBA?
Self-contained breathing apparatus, or air packs.
Thank you.
And then our forcible entry training simulator, this is bottom right-hand corner of that picture, it's just a, it's a forcible entry door that we can tear up and beat on in an effort to be better when we do have to do that out in the real, out in the real world. It's not something people generally like us to practice on, their homes, their businesses, so this will give us the opportunity to teach our folks how to do that without doing as much damage to the property. And then lastly, beacon light for Station Five, we will be looking to put a light that is triggered from Station Five in an effort to slow traffic down off the loop. We have a lot of near misses out there, people do not necessarily care that a fire truck's pulling out of that station, and that's a pretty high-speed intersection, so we're hoping that that beacon light will help at least alert the public that they're fixing to come out and try to slow them down. Looking at our future needs, about, I guess, two years ago, I actually did a five-year asset replacement program and turned that into the city manager. And so this, so most of this is just, I just took this right off of that. Obviously, you know, we would like at some point to be able to relocate Station Five. The biggest challenge there is finding land. The land right now, everybody's very proud of, so right now, it's probably not the best time to try to buy that land. And then our fleet, that changes from year to year, but that's just kind of a snapshot of the next three, three to four years of what we're going to be needing. And then our capital replacement as well. We try to get, most of the equipment that we purchase is very expensive, and we know that, and so we try to break it up over a four- or five-year period in small increments so it's not too much at one time. And then we'll be looking at and trying to look at investigator-inspector position for next year. They, over in the Fire Marshal's Office, those guys really have their hands for it right now. They're having a hard time keeping up just because of the sheer volume of work that's going on in the community, so. But before we bring that forward, we'll make sure that all those things align, so. That is my budget. Yes, ma'am?
Question, the beacon signal, tell me more about that. Is that something that lights up the driveway?
No, no, it'll be further down from the station, so they'll be able to trigger a blinking light that's an alert that they're fixing to pull out of the station.
It, to me, it's very similar to, you'll see those warnings that a traffic signal's fixing to change, you know, out, especially going near Conti Drive, there's that sign that says, you know, "Traffic signal changing" or something, it flashes, so you know the light's fixing to change.
We're also going to have those on Ball Airport Road in front of the station, the new station as well.
And Station Five for everybody's the one located near Citizens Health Plex out on the loop.
What does one of those cost?
They're about 6,000.
For beacon light?
Can there, something like a horn be added to it to, you know, besides, because if somebody's blaring on their phone, I mean, on their radio, they're not going to see it or hear, I mean, but, you know, can we add something else to it?
It, text dot regulates, I was going to say, text dot regulates what.
The visual's almost the best because it doesn't, because it doesn't matter what they're listening to, they can, you know, hopefully they're picking up on that and they'll start to slow down. We've had some wrecks right there in front of the station, landed in the yard, that's just where those two come together, and the people on the side, on the service road, they don't drive any slower than the people coming off, so.
Yeah, the problem is people drive too fast.
Yeah.
Period. There's nothing, no other way to put it, and I mean, the county put, or whoever, the text dot, put those dividers, delineators up, and I didn't care for those.
They get knocked down.
Yes.
You see two or three of them missing all the time, so.
You know, as far as the location, relocation of Five, there's nothing that we could do to the structure to change the exit on it? We don't have enough land to move it to the back, to the side?
It's the fact that you're on a one-way feeder road, that's the problem, because they're having to go west to turn around to go east, so, because they can't.
But I don't remember, the land behind us, it belongs to the church or to the?
There's a nursing, not a nursing home.
It's the nursing home? Okay, so they already have that property, so we couldn't open the doors the other way?
We talked about it quite a bit, actually, since the healthplex, which is owned by the counties next door, well, that's, that's the idea because that's a county facility, and this is a county department, but from our parking lot to the healthplex parking lot, from me to the chief, it drops about 10 feet.
Yeah, it drops a lot.
It's not 10, I'm exaggerating, but so your trucks can't make that.
Yeah.
Plus, which way do you put the trucks in the station?
We've looked at those options out there, it's.
None of room.
No.
It's frustrating.
I had one question. The old abandoned training tower on Constitution, I was driving that area this morning and saw it. Any thoughts about that in the future, demolishing it, or?
Besides the fact that it needs to be mowed?
Well, if you can get the water to go down.
It needs to be mowed.
But I'm just thinking it's, are we going to do anything with it, or are we going to plan to demolish it?
I don't know.
We can, we can, I mean, we're not, it has no value to us since we've moved to the other facility.
It can be demolished.
Something in the future to think about.
Yeah, it's just a matter of funding it.
Okay. Anything else? I did want.
Wait, 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 Colby, what's the time?
I do want to mention one last thing, and, you know, many of you have heard over the last couple of years, you know, when the police chief gets up here, he's typically got a comment about the fire department, and sometimes it's not very favorable, but we have, we have a scene reporter that takes, captures photos of things we do out in the street and whatnot. We recently caught him out there actually humping hoes, and I thought that was kind of ironic for somebody that, so it's that day when a police chief's childhood dream is finally fulfilled, living the dream, so.
I can't wait for the payback on that one.
He can't speak after me, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I just want to mention too, as you're walking back, that you're an example of the STEMI's of the Fort Rees, and I'm very proud of that, and I, you know, as I thought about asking you, what do you attribute that to, and it's probably everything. It's your people, it's your equipment, it's your training, hopefully the rest of the staff, so congratulations on that.
I think, before he sits down too, I think the working relationship with the hospitals and the ability to review, you know, after the fact, what's going on, and his QA process that he implemented after he came here is, so it's a great training value. Yes, sir. Yeah, Tracy did that. But, yeah, it's a great program, so. Okay, Gilbert, are you ready for all the numbers?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, council, good evening. I want to let you know that I'm taking some medication. Don't worry, I'll be okay, but I have two bottles of water, just in case. Now it's going to take two hours, three hours, just, I need to keep fresh in my mouth, and now we're copping mouth here, I don't want to be distracted here. But anyway, over the past few days, y'all have been listening to various departments, especially General Fund, about their budget, their proposed budget, the numbers, the variances, and explaining all that. The purpose of the night, what I plan to do is take you to a higher level, like a 36,000-feet level, to give you the big picture, to see how all these numbers roll up and what we're looking at, the money dollars. And of course, I need to throw a little cartoon in here. Throughout every budget process, you know, we always have a wish list. All the department heads go to the city manager and they submit their budget, requests, and everything else, and her, one of her big responsibilities is to align all these requests with the limited resources we have, know what's going to make it and what's not going to make it. So that's a big responsibility she has to carry. Not only that, all the items that have not been approved, basically doesn't go away. They're kind of put on a holding pattern, and sometimes throughout the years, you might see some items come back and say, hey, can we do this, could we have the funds, or it comes, move it to the next notch for the next year, so that can happen. I just want to let you know that, yes, departments come in with a lot of requests, but they're not discarded, they always looked at. Fire department got their building, maybe one day PD will get a building, maybe. I got to put a disclaimer in here. Of course, this is a work in progress. I'm still working on projections. I probably won't finalize these projections as far as late June or early July. We also have the surfer tax row that won't be given to me till the 27th. And a couple of days after that, I'll be still fine-tuning the numbers, and I will get with the city manager, make sure everything's okay. Bottom line, she will be, it's okay, she will be safe, be submitting a budget that is in balance, meaning that at least the minimum, you have revenues equal expenses, or it'll be a little greater than your expenses. Tonight, what I plan to do is kind of, I want to show you the whole grand picture, the all-inclusive. Why we buy all-inclusive is that it encompasses, includes all one-time expenses, includes the proposed new programs, and show that number compared to last year's all-inclusive program, I mean, budget, which includes the one-times recurring too as well. Then I want to dissect it a little bit, I want to break it down. I want to bring it down to a baseline budget. Some might think, what's a baseline? Well, the baseline, in my definition, is like, what are we left, how did we leave off last year as reoccurring? Bottom line, what costs is, what's the cost to operate the city on a recurring basis? How's that compare to what we're proposing today? Okay? And then we're going to follow up with one-time expenses, and I know we've been talking about one-time expenses, one-time expenses, but for Ms. Scott, just to make sure, maybe it's a refresher for everybody, when we're talking about one-time expenses, we're talking about any items that at least minimal, it won't happen again in another five years, real thumb, or it won't happen again, or it might happen within a small gap of timeframe, two, three years in a row, and then it's gone. Those is what we call one-time expenses. It won't have a major impact on a short or long term of the financial stability of the city. Does that make sense? So when I say one-time expenses, basically, it's a short time, we spend it, we're gone. The funding of that one-time expenses usually don't come from the recurring revenue. It's coming from the fund balance, from leftover funds from previous years. That's how we fund those one-time expenses. If the money's not there, well, we don't have no one-time expenses, okay? Then we'll talk about the revenues. I know you probably want to start there first, but I thought I'd work you through the expense side, and then we'll end up with the fund balance. How we're going to begin in the fund balance, put the layers in there, and what we're going to end up in the end of the year. So let's start off. Right now, all-inclusive, meaning new proposed programs and one-time expenses, we're looking at a $51.6 million budget. I'm going to look down here because it's hard to see from up there. Public safety, of course, encompasses 53% of the budget, that's always the norm. And I have grouped these in what I call divisions. So public safety, for example, would be PD, fire, municipal court operations. Public works, street, engineer, and traffic. Public works is second largest, the parks department, we're looking at $5.2 million, 10% of the total budget. What's interesting here, and I took a look at this because that Five stuck out there big, and went back, and since 2000, since the year 2000 all the way to 2015, the average annual budget for Parks Department was an average $3 million. 2015, the budget's $3.8 million. So we have grown that budget to a $5 million. Now, of course, and I'll explain later in further slides, it's not because of recurring, it's mainly because of one-time expenses. The story here is just that we are focusing as well more towards the parks besides the streets and public safety. I just want to make sure you understand that. I know there's been a lot of talk in the public, I know the lines have their meetings, and they like to see more services done and everything, and I think management has tried an effort to make sure we're in line with what the community is looking for as well. The next category, general administration, basically, that's $3.4 million, 7%. What's in there is city manager, legal, fire department, I mean, it's finance, city secretary, PIO, Public Information Department, okay?
Human resource.
And human resource. I'm glad she's not here, and I should look. Development services, Jared's department. Development services, GIS, planning, inspection, code enforcement, library service, non-departmental. Non-departmental is a department that, if nothing fits in the other departments, will end up there. An example, we pay Victoria County appraisal district a fee, it goes there. We pay Rena, the tax collector, a service fee, it goes there. We allocate money for the zoo, it goes there. Insurance, the TML, goes there. So that's what the purpose of a non-departmental. Okay. Now let's go, let's compare an all-inclusive budget from last year to this year. Last year, we were looking at a $49.4 million. This year, we're looking at a $51.5 million. That's a $2.1 million increase, or a 4.3% increase. Wow, but don't get scared yet. One of the things I want to dissect a little bit is that you can tell the public safety stayed within the 53% range. Now, public works, as you can see there, dropped from last year, 20% down to 18%. Last night, we had a discussion with Lynn, was making his presentation about the streets. I know we were talking about the street programs and everything. I want to take a few minutes and maybe just go through it real quick, lay it out a little quick. Can you pass this up for me? And just show you what really happens, at least you see the numbers in front of you. I know there was a lot of verbiage last night, just want to make sure everybody understands what transpired, or it will be transpiring in the budget. Okay, I'll wait a few more minutes. All right. What I'm calling a street program, from my perspective, Lynn always breaks it down in different categories, but what it really is, it's combined, consists of the seal coat, seal coating street program and residential street program, all combined. I'm looking at the whole pie here. So for 2015, we had a total budget street program of $9.8 million. I'm going to go down the column first. The funding for that, we had General Fund funding of $3.8 million. And of course, as you well know, we issued $6 million in bond to accommodate that program. If you go a little further, I kind of dissected General Fund funding. The General Fund funding was 3.8, of which, $2.8 million were from the reoccurring programs that he has every year, and then we added $990,000 in one-time expenses. In his presentation, you saw a negative 990 coming out, that's that 990. On the 2016 column, we're proposing right now about a $5.8 million budget on the program street, street program. The funding will come, General Fund, about 2.8. The plan right now for the CIP, in which y'all have reviewed and looked at, we're proposing a $2 million bond issue that fits within our capacity. In addition to that... In addition to that, we have approximately close to a million dollars in leftover bonds from other old bonds that we're scraping them all up and adding to the street program. Okay? And what I mean leftover is that it has come in under budget, or the contingency was used up, so we're going to continue to use that money moving forward on another new street program. So that's how it's going to be funded. From the general fund perspective, the 2.8 million dollar funding is broken up as follows. All of it will come from the reoccurring. Okay? So you go to the farhand left side, on the bottom side with general fund. The general fund funding was reduced by $1 million overall. The general fund reoccurring expenses was reduced by $82,000. That's the item Lynn was talking about last night. That's the $82,000. And the one-time expenses were reduced by 990. But keep in mind, we're moving from leftover bonds over into this street program. So it's picking up that difference and plus some. So we're not going backwards, we're still going forward, in a way. The whole purpose of this financial strategy, bottom line, is that we need to, I was lucky to find that we did have some money left over in these bonds because that was, gave us the ability to do the $1.5 million park administration building. Because that's the one-time money. So it's kind of competing against the street. In order to make that happen, I was lucky enough to, we have some bonds here to shore up that shortage on the general fund, so I can go ahead and fund the park improvement program. Does that make sense? Let's make sure everybody understands, because yesterday, wondering, okay, are we not doing the streets? We are doing the streets, but it's just the mechanism of funding is coming from a different sources now, for this year. Yes, ma'am?
Following all that, but I'm having trouble with the very first number on here because I didn't remember that big of a drop from last night's presentation on the budget. And I'm looking at.
You're talking about the total budget?
If I can just show this to Charmel, I'm sure she'll recognize it and tell you what I'm talking about. This, this is what he had for streets, but he's got 9.8. Is it different funds that I'm still learning about?
Yes. The street budget has 6.8 for 15 and 5.9, which your total up here is 9.8. So that's what we've got in the street department budget, though.
I'm sorry.
Funds, it's different funds. It's not just all, all general fund.
Correct.
She's, Jane's looking at all general fund here, and this is not all general fund here. Your 9.3.
The 9.3, 9.8, you mean?
Yes, 9.8, I'm sorry.
That's the combination of different funds.
Bonds and funds, and that's the difference.
Yeah, when you started out, you said, I want to clarify or make this clear from last night, so I went to last night.
Okay, no, well, the idea of the conversation about the streets being reduced, that's the whole, by going back to last night.
Okay.
Okay?
Quickly, you're, but you're going to encumber that 82,000. You're going to use that 82, 286 and the 990 to go to parks?
It goes away on the general fund. Yeah, technically, yes.
Because I was, what I was thinking is, okay, you put those pieces together. The other one that stands out, that I recall, we were going to get refunded by Techstat for some street.
Traffic signal?
A traffic signal, about 250,000, I'm guessing. Has that come back to us? Or I don't even know if they put that light, we haven't put that structure up, have we? Yeah. And we won't see, we won't see that come back to us.
Goes into the general fund reserve.
Right. But I'm thinking, in anticipation of that money coming back, coupled with some of these variances.
Gilbert uses that in his revenue projections.
Yeah, the fund balance, we already assumed it's still there because what I did, I set up a receivable from Techstat. So yes, I took it out of cash, but I expect the receivable from a fund balance perspective, from a cash flow from the whole year. It's, it's going to be there. So it's not like you got another 250.
Right, it's redistributed among all the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Back to the slide, parks went from an 8% increase, I mean, 8% to a 10% increase. That's because of the one-time expenses. Everything else kind of stayed the same. Libraries went down slightly because the one-time expenses were less. And of course, none department went up, which I explained later, it's basically the OPEB. Moving on, any questions? Now, this slide kind of compares all-inclusive 2016, all-inclusive, all-inclusive 2015 by divisions or grouped up departments. Public safety shows the increase of about $740,000, a 2.8% increase. Public works shows a reduction of 691,000, a minus 6.9. Parking recreation increased $1.3 million, a 34.4% increase. General administration services, 89,000 increase, a 2.6% increase. Development services, a reduction of 16,000, or 0.69% decrease. Library services, 19,000 increase, or 0.87% increase. None department services increased by 667,000, 668,000, a 62% increase. Now, that's an all-inclusive, so we went from 50, from a $49.7 million budget to a 51.6 million budget, which had increased by 2.1 million, an increase of 4.3. So what's the increase? Why did it go up? Well, in order to understand the increase of 2.1, first, we gotta ask ourselves some questions and understand the data itself. What makes up the 2016 budget, the components? What are the one-time expenses that are in there? What are the new proposed program that's included in that all-inclusive budget? And what is the baseline for 2016 in order to compare that to 2017 to give a better feel what are your increases are on a recurring basis? Okay? With that said, as I mentioned, we started off with an all-inclusive of $51.6 million. Last year was 49.7, a 2.1 increase, which of course, I'm repeating myself, 4.3% increase. Now, let's take out the one-time expenses. This year's one-time expenses, 2016 proposed budget, excuse me, is 3.5. I will go through the details, what makes up that number in a minute. Last year's one-time is 2.4. We're showing approximately 1.1 million dollar increase in one-time expenses, or a 44% increase. So now we have a reoccurring budget line item. But in the 2016 column, you still have the new programs. So in order to compare apples to apples, we need to take those out so you can compare it to the 2015 reoccurring of 47. When you do that, we have reoccurring new program at a cost of approximately 1.4 million. Once you take that out, now you got a baseline budget you can compare to last year. So this year, we're proposing a 46.7 baseline budget compared to last year's of 47 million. So overall, you had a reduction on reoccurring expenses compared to last year of 283,000 or a 0.6% decrease. Does that make sense? Before I move on, I want to make sure you understand the layers you're looking at. So we're going to focus right now on the baseline. What is that 283,000? What's causing that? And then after that, we're going to start building the budget back up. We're going to show the one-time expenses, and we'll go back to the new programs too. And we'll end up with a total program that we're proposing. Does that make sense? Okay. Now, comparing the baseline budget, again, by service divisions. Oh, before I say anything else, the increase and decrease, I'll address those in a later slide. So I'm just going, the whole purpose is to show the variance, that you had a big, huge variance before. Now, it's a different picture now. That's the whole purpose of this slide. Public works went down. Now you show an increase of 0.3% increase. Public work services went down by 231,000, is the number he presented last night, a minus 3%. Parking recreation went down by 16,000, a minus 0.5%. General administration went down by $46,000, that's a minus 2.3%. Development services increased by barely a $3,000, that's a 0.2%. Library services decreased by $39,000, that's a decrease of 1.8%. And none departmental increased only by 1.1 thousand, something like that, only 0.1%. So overall, you had $283,000 reduction comparing baseline to last, this year's proposed budget to current budget of 2015. Overall, the minus 0.6% decrease. So what causes, what caused the decrease of 283? The next slide, we'll break it down by costs, by personnel, MNO and capital. And I will go through each one to identify the areas it went down. But overall, you can see that majority of it, 95% of it, is in personnel, $236,000. What's, I don't want to be repeating myself all the way going down. What that is, is basically several things are in play. You might have people retired. Well, they were part of budget at a higher level, now they're going to be budget at a different level. That's one example. Two, you can have a position budget at a certain level, and they were hired at a different level. So there's a variance there. Three, there's a change in overtime, there was a reduction, there's a couple of departments that did that. Another one could be the, another example is city manager and legal had some overlapping pay. Ruby, retired, we got to pay the retirement and bringing somebody in. That's an example. Overlapping pay on legal was Linda, but she's staying around a little longer, she's going to retire later. So that's not going to happen. Another example is that employees might change their health insurance. They might take it, they might be at it. Those, all those changes come into play and sums up out of the 400, some, I think, 400, slightly over 400 in general fund, employees makes up that 236,000. Does that make sense? Capital went down by $63,000. MNO went up by 16. Now, public safety, and I will get to the jail in a minute, I promise you. Public safety, overall, went up by $75,000. Well, personnel, majority of that's $53,000. MNO, body cameras, software maintenance, that's $46,000. The jail contract, $69,000. On that, the county has increased their fees, but those fees were implemented several years ago. The second part is that since 2010 all the way to 2013, our overall cost for the jail contract was less than 145,000. In 2014, it went up 213,000, 214,000. The increase, basically, you got more people going to jail, more services being out of the, using the jail. And for 2015, the logic part of me is like, I need to increase that from 145 to 214,000 budget. So the difference to 214,000 budget versus the original budget of 145 is your 69,000 increase. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question, Mr. Jarvis?
Yes. But if we don't use all that money.
2016, it might be a slower year. But I was surprised, so I said, from the safe side, I think I need to increase it because it's, it's, it's there. And the increase was basically, we're at the same level at the federal, what the federal government pays. And of course, as JJ pointed out, I don't know if it's still here, they have added some other costs. You got medical costs that wasn't really original there. So every time we take the inmate now, we pay for that too as well.
I just hope it's a slower year for JJ.
Public safety's, where I thought, capital went down, I mean, went increased by 10,000. Only thing that's happening there, the majority of that is because we're replacing computers. I think there are about 25 units of them. Public works decreased by 231,000. Staff, of course, as I explained, 61,000. The MNO decrease, that whole decrease basically is due to the 141,000 reduction in the, in the storm sewer drainage maintenance program, as Lynn discussed yesterday. Capital decreased by $92,000. The majority of that is a $82,000 reduction in reoccurring on the street program, which I explained earlier. And who's picking up the difference, which is the bonds. Parking recreation decreased by 16,000. Personnel, 43,000. MNO went down by 14,000, basically because of small two supplies. That's the county does to repair, some of his moors and everything went down by 19,000. Excuse me. Capital increased by 40,000, 41,000. There's a net difference as a result of that. From a reoccurring standpoint, our increase in parks improvement structures out there went up by 84,000. And machinery equipment went down as a net of $34,000. General administration went down by $46,000. Majority of that, 26,000 is because of the overlapping pay I mentioned while I go with Linda and Ruby. The MNO decreased 49,000 because of professional services and legal department went down by 12,000. PIO, professional services, went down by 12,000 on the TV side. Logic there is that we're bringing in a part-time. OC, you want to add comments to that, or you, I don't want to miss.
Well, primarily next year, and I'm going to be doing a slight presentation on kind of what's changing with VTV 15, what's changed in the last year, and I guess we can talk about what's going into next year's budget. We're going to be putting in a permanent desktop system that's a lot more automated. So we'll have the equipment, we're updating all the cameras, we're updating the, the equipment that produces basically the show. So all we'll have to do is hire somebody to basically produce the show. The equipment will all be ours. So that saves us quite a bit of money.
Thank you, OC.
Development services personnel, $35,000 reduction. MNO increased by 53, basically, the new software maintenance they have, it's $24,000 increase there. And we're replacing two vehicles there, and that's a cost of $49,000. Demolition went down by 10,000, and contract labor went down by 10,000. All that is net effect. On the capital side of the development services, a net decrease of 15,000, basically for routine equipment and computers. Library, 17,000 on personnel, MNO decrease on the lighting power. On the lighting power, it's just, again, like we talked about usage and how that applies there. Library subscription went down 18,000, and the capital decreased due to computer equipment by 5,000. I did that quite fast because I know all the departments kind of went through it. But that's the whole, just on that side. Any question concerning the reoccurring baseline decrease of 283? Okay? If that's the case, let's move on to the new reoccurring expenses that managers proposing. First of all, we're looking at a 3% across the board or COLA pay program costing the city, general fund, $461,000. That's 34% of the total, 1.36 million. When I say the 3% COLA, it's all, it doesn't include certified firefighters, firefighters, firefighters and police officers, and not supervisors.
It doesn't include those that are eligible for the STEP plan.
Thank you.
Let's do it that way.
Thank you. She was here tonight, she will help me with that. The fire department is what we call a STEP pay program. It's a little different than the COLA. That one comes out to about $308,000, represents 23%. Now, also, that was another item that were proposed, and it's not included in, in the budget at all right now, but it's still on the city manager desk, and we're still looking at ways to maybe, how it can fit if things work out, is a market adjustment. And so we're still going to look at, we can talk, I have a last slide of items that we want to talk about with you and give you some options, how they can come about. But right now, the market adjustment's not in there.
And that's for police and fire.
That's correct. In addition, we have a carryover 2015 pay performance program from last year. It's not a new program, but it's new money that needs to be allocated to address individuals having received theirs because this program is based on their anniversary date. So there's a timing gap there. The OPEB trust, what we talked about, the cities, the general funds portion of that is 158,000. We have included two police officers at 116,000, 8%. They also added, requesting two other ones, it's not in here, but we'll talk about it soon. As the chief mentioned while ago, we have one assistant fire chief in here at $80,000, 6% of the total, the total new cost. In addition, lastly, we have a career ladder program costing us about 31,000. It consists of two departments, the parks department and development services. It consists of two departments, the Parks Department and Development Services. Any questions? So that, in a nutshell, is your new programs that we're, management's proposing for 2016. The next slide, basically, we'll break it down by its division. Public Safety, eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. This, ma'am, sorry.
You said that that one is new programs?
New programs. In other words, we haven't had those before. There was no...
Right.
No money, okay.
The, at the, I think the Parks Department had a building. That also would be a one-time type of expense, but that's not in this.
That's not in here.
Is this, but this is called proposed new recurring expenses, so there's going to be something later on?
The one-time, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm breaking in layers.
It says expenses and...
Recurring expenses.
I wasn't finding that one.
Recurring expenses.
Recurring.
The one-time is not recurring.
Recurring, recurring, got it.
That's the key word. Okay, on this slide here, I'm going to break it down by the service divisions and how that cost is allocated. The new programs are one-point-three-six. Public Safety, looking at about eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. And of course, I have each of the new programs on each column, and that represents about sixty-point-one, sixty-point-one percent increase. Public Works, a six-point-one increase is about eighty-two thousand. Parking Rec, six percent increase by eighty-two thousand dollars. General Administration, seven percent, that's about ninety-five thousand dollars. Development Services, five-point-seven percent, that's seventy-eight thousand dollars. Library, three-point-five percent, that's approximately forty-eight thousand dollars. And non-departmental, which is the O.P.E.T., one-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars makes up the remaining eleven-point-six percent. There is your allocation of the new programs management is proposing for the coming year. They were never, didn't exist in last year. These are reoccurring. They were going to happen again in 2017, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Okay? Before I move on, any questions? Now, the next slide is going to talk about one-time expenses.
A minute, Gilbert.
Go back.
Where is the, the attorneys? Is it in general administration?
The attorney, legal is in general administration.
H.R. is in administration, and some of those that we have talked about.
Correct.
Thank you.
City, Ms. Garrett figures that those are a small...
Right.
Operation. If there's any question, we can address, we can address them during the budget process because we're going to have some work sessions throughout the month of August. So now we've got one-time expenses of three-point-five million dollars. I can go through all these, but they're self-explainable there. Fire Department, building improvements, heater, Police Department. Human Resources, we have a proposed salary survey of twenty-five thousand dollars. We haven't done those in a while, so it's going back out in the market, see where everything is in line with us compared as to wages and everything else.
Would that encompass all departments, Gilbert?
All departments.
Okay.
Well, Fire and P.D. might be a different animal itself. I don't know that, Ms. Garrett.
It still includes Fire and P.D., but she, she recently looked at Fire and P.D.
The Street Department, pass truck, air compression, various machines and equipment. Traffic Department, that's a project, as Lynn mentioned yesterday, forty-four-point-six thousand dollars. Warrant study, bucket truck, municipal court, there's some office equipment there. Planning Department, a little more money for the comprehensive plan. The G.I.S., we talked about that yesterday. Just FYI, that number might change. It's still a working number. Building Services, and you have Park. One thing about Park is that, that, that section of Park totals up to approximately two million dollars in one-time expenses. Last year, we allocated six-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. I just emphasize it again, how much emphasis we put into Park Services this year. That's a hundred-and-eighty-two percent increase over last year's one-time expenses. Of course, the YMCA slash city pool, I don't know if Ms. Scott is familiar with that program?
A little bit, yeah.
You are? Okay.
No, I'm, I'm familiar with the, the concept and the fact that...
The council agreed to fund the project over a three-year period. This is the second year. This is five-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand dollars that are going into the pot. Last year of funding would be happening in 2017 for the same amount.
That was, that was my question. This didn't look like the number that I remembered, but it's over time.
A few more, library, some improvements, A.C. And of course, I recap the bottom to show you the allocation, which departments are getting what, in dollars?
Gilbert, do you mind?
Any questions? I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to do a reminder again. On those parks, but, on those parks projects, minus the building, you know, we may have to change, we may have to do another project instead of one that's listed due to the flooding.
That's, that's correct.
So we're still kind of looking at that.
There's a moving budget.
Can you explain where the one-time expense money is coming from?
One-time expense money is coming from fund balance, left or cash that we expect to end of the year with coming into next year.
And still maintain a twenty-five percent...
That's correct. And I'll, I'll, I'll get to that in a minute, but that's, that's how we're going to fund the, the one-time. We can't, we don't like to use all the recurring one-time because that, that's, we can't. We've got other expenses. So anytime we have some available funds, still meet our minimum requirement twenty-five percent balance, that little gap can be applied based on council's way of handling things in the past. It can always change, but we always assume from a budgetary standpoint, that money will be thrown towards the one-time expenses, which is prioritized by the city manager. Is that it? Okay, let me kind of put it all together for y'all. As I mentioned earlier, we had a reoccurring baseline budget last year, 2015, or currently, of forty-seven million dollars. Went in there, did some looking, and after analysis, we had a reduction of two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars in various one-time expenses. So now you've got a baseline budget for 2016 proposed of forty-six-point-seven million dollars. New recurring expenses added on top of that at one-point-four million dollars. You add the one-time expenses on top of that at three-point-five, you end up back where we started, at the five, fifty-one-point-six million dollar all-inclusive budget. Make sense? Hey, revenues, I know this is part, a lot of people want to know, but y'all probably look back there, so, you know, I'm just up here, that's just what looks. Proposed revenue budget is forty-eight-point-four. Again, a moving target. Sales tax, eighteen million dollars is about thirty-seven-point-four percent of the budget. Property taxes, which are your landlord taxes, fourteen-point-six million dollars, which is thirty-point-two million, thirty-point-two percent. Franchise taxes makes up about five-point-five percent, which is eleven-point-four. For the purpose of Ms. Scott, franchise taxes are basically, are like AEP. AEP pays us a royalty of three percent for the use of our right-of-way. Okay? Another example is our landfills operated by Republic. In contract terms, we get fifteen percent from the gate. Another example, Waste Management, we get a fifteen percent because they use our right-of-way to operate in Victoria. Telecommunication, your phones, that one is regulated by the P.U.C. state, so we get a, it varies depending on the type of line you have. It can go from a dollar, eighty cents to two dollars, depending on the type of line. That franchise fee is regulated by the state, and we get a check from them. Southern Link, we get a five percent on the revenues, we can, for the right-of-way usage. In addition to that, it's not part of the general fund, but more FYI, we get a one percent, what we call PEG, for the TV side. And we'll talk about that, O.C.'s going to address that later in his budget. Reliance, currently, we're getting a two percent for the right-of-way use, but it's my understanding legal's into some contract revisions with Reli, is it Reliant? Center Point, excuse me, I stand corrected? And that should go up from a two percent to a three percent.
And that's the gas company.
That's correct.
People may not have gas, natural gas.
Thank you. Sometimes I have gas.
Need a strong...
Victoria Electric Co-op has the three percent for use of right-of-way too as well. But I just wanted to give you, Ms. Scott, what we mean by franchise tax. It's not the state franchise tax, it's a little different terminology here. Other financial sources, basically what that is, transfer from other operating funds. We have a policy in place where Water Fund and Environment, which is the biggest one, will transfer, well, Water will transfer ten percent, and Environmental will transfer by eleven percent. I explained why the difference. Back to the general fund for several reasons. One is that all the administration services are operated through, you know, so you've got city manager, finance, legal, so it's like a, paying for our services in a way. Second part is like, we try to operate them like there was a private industry because they will pay a franchise tax. That's part of the inclusive tier. One of the things we try to avoid is to draw so much away from these funds because then they don't have any money to operate. It doesn't look good on their side. Rating agencies don't like that, so we try to keep that on a minimum flat, reasonable. The difference why we have a one percent higher in the environmental, over the years, we have a bigger, you know, we have, we experience, there's more deterioration, deterioration, yeah, of larger trucks that are on our streets every time, from those garbage trucks and everything else. So we figure we need to get a little more just in case, just to repair those streets. And that's the only reason we have a little difference there. Ambulance charges, it's one-point-nine million dollars, three-point-eight percent. Victoria County, one-point-five-eight-five. It used to be one-point-five. There's contract, as you well, was amended, and we increased it by eighty-five thousand. Forfeiture, fine and forfeiture, basically it's municipal court. One-point-two million dollars, license and permits. Nine-hundred, nine-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars, intergovernmental. Basically, what that is, the majority of that is sales tax. They pay us a fee to supervise administrators, all these projects we do for them. Charges for other services, three-hundred-and-fifty-five, three-hundred-and-five thousand dollars in miscellaneous revenue, basically interest, income, and whatever, don't feel any other categories goes there. One key part of this is that, as you can tell, property tax and sales tax make up about sixty-eight percent of our revenue. Those are kind of our lifeline. These other revenues above them, on this pie, are pretty stable. They're, we can control those in a way, and they're pretty stable. We can kind of rely on, from a risk standpoint, property tax is more reliable than the sales tax. As you well know, that's can go any way up and down, roller coaster, but likely we've been favorable. Yes, sir.
Depends on if the legislature's meeting or not.
Well, we were, we were, I was, was I worried? Yeah, a little bit.
That was a joke, yeah.
And I get to that in a minute, too. But so, our focus point really on this budget would be the property tax and sales tax. All right, one quick slide here. I just wanted to show you, and I'll go through these variances real quickly, hit the highlights on them. On the sales tax and property tax, I will talk about those separately in a minute. But franchise tax went up by three-hundred-and-nine thousand dollars, basically, is to, I made some assumptions, some of the entities will be adjusting their fees or based on historical trend. The biggest part, of course, is the Center Point changing their two percent to three percent royalties, so that's going to have a major effect. The other financial sources, transfer from other funds went up by twenty-six thousand. Ambulance, seventy thousand dollars, basically just by historical trend and what I'm feeling and how that's going to transpire. As I mentioned, the fire contract, eighty-five thousand. Municipal court, been looking good, so I'm comfortable going up by eighty, sixty-two thousand dollars on that one. Fine, license and permit decreased overall by fifteen hundred dollars. Basically, the main factor there was because our liquor permits are, I'm assuming an increase of about thirty thousand. But looking at our various different construction permits, I have to step back, I have to gauge the trend. It's just, it's starting to kind of load off, so I'm being, I'm reducing it by thirty-two thousand dollars from last year. Other charges, basically what that may consist of, well, we don't have a swimming pool anymore. Last year, I had a fourteen thousand dollar budget, so that goes out. Market age revenue being adjusted downward by five thousand. And of course, the widdy lot program, adjusted to the historical trend, I'm receiving right now, experiencing right now. And miscellaneous revenue, basically, interest revenue, I'm projecting it could be a ten thousand dollar increase, and I increased also the miscellaneous revenue category by ten thousand. That's all in a nutshell. Now, let's talk about the meat and potato, which is the sales tax and property tax. Okay, let me just get this up here real quick. The blue line there is actual, the original budget. This is over a seventeen-time fiscal year. The red line is the actual collection of the sales tax per each fiscal year. That little black line that you see there represents a three-year moving, moving average, okay? The green, of course, is my projection, and I'm going to throw everything else in line there. What I want us to concentrate is that little red circle I have up there. The 2015 budget, right now, was, was proposing a seventeen-point-six million dollars. Currently, right now, today, I'm projecting about an eighteen-point-four million dollars projected. That's an increase of almost eight-hundred thousand dollars. That's large. And I would have to say, after studying this, that the majority of this increase, of course, as I think, a lot of consumers have more dispensable income on their, in their pocket due to the fact that you've got your fuel prices and gas going down. They have more dollars in their pocket. And I find myself spending more money too as well. But that's one of the main factors. If you look around, there is some economic development going on in Victoria, but I can't point my finger that shows me eight-hundred thousand dollars increase in receipt because of this project. The only thing I have to say is that it has to be somewhat directly, majority into the economy related to fuel prices. Yes, sir.
Is there any way to correlate it to the construction of the apartment complexes and the tax on those materials?
That's possible. I would have to do a little more in-depth analysis. I'll get the data from the controller. But that's just like, you had that last year too, heavy construction. Heavy construction, just, I didn't have that gap last year. I didn't have that big jump in sales taxes. So I looked at that, but I can go and dig a little further, but it's like, I had that scenario last year. What makes a difference this year? I've got construction this year too. And I think I'd say the heavier, biggest materials at the front end, which I assume was started last year, now they're kind of going and leveling off and starting tapering down. That's my assumption here. I'm no construction guy, I'll tell you that. But the only reason I can guess why I'm thinking of coming in eight-hundred now, keep in mind, that's a moving one. I still got two more months to come in, and that might come down. I'm going to show you something in a minute. But with that said, I can't assume that we're going to have that same trend for 2016. So I have to play out some scenarios where part of that gap between the seventeen-six and eighteen-point-four, there has to be a portion of windfall. In other words, I want to, I have to assume that won't happen again. Logically, I have to take that view because I don't want to create a scenario that we got all this money, and all of a sudden you don't have it, and then Paul will be right for once. But anyway...
I would rather you be right.
I would have, as a result of that, I have tapered down my projection for next year. In this case, I'm showing eighteen-point-one million dollars. Now, again, qualifying this as a moving target, and I explained that in a minute. Besides, the number's not on, but I'll show you another scenario in a minute. So that's an increase of about five-hundred thousand dollars comparing budget to budget. That's that three percent increase. Now, can you pass this out? What the gentleman's going to pass you, pass out in a minute here, it's another graph. And I, I don't want us to take time looking at it, just to give you, I was going to point out one thing to be cautious about. This graph represents twenty years of the state of Texas as an overall state, not, not cities, state of Texas, twenty-year collections. And it also plots a moving twelve-month average. The twelve-month average is that black little line, that squiggle line goes up and down. Okay? What I want you keying in here is that, on the far hand right, you have 2015-03. It has eight-point-o-two percent. You see that? With that said, back in March of 2015, the overall state sales tax increased by the 8.02%, okay? If you go to the farther end, as of May 2015, it went down to 7.14%. So, something, to me, I'm looking at the trend in history, it dipped down, it goes up, and I'm, I've still got a couple more collections, but if I was Ben Man, I can see it being almost level, or still following that pattern. So, as a result of that, I'm telling you, that's a moving target. And till I get those next two, we already saw a couple, and that's, I already adjusted a couple of times, because I saw it came down, as y'all look at those, the one Andrew sent out, those sales tax, it has dropped. So, hopefully, the next two months will give me a plateau, tell me, give me a definite good feeling, and say, okay, this is a good number, okay? That's just for more FYI.
You just need to keep spending money.
Ma'am?
You just need to keep spending money.
I, well.
You said you were spending money, you just need to keep spending money.
I didn't say who, my family. That's one thing I realized when you get married. I'm still learning.
Did you project out at the 7.74% what that would be the end, at the end?
I'm sorry, Mr. Horace, I hear.
Did you project out what it would be at the end? What would be your projected actual, based on that 7.74?
But, okay, I'm glad you brought that up. Just because the state's showing a 7.7% return over comparison, every city doesn't follow that same trend. There are cities that you can have a 7% increase overall, but just some cities have 0% of flat level. Ours, for example, if you look at the last two, we actually had, it went down, but the state kind of stayed level with it. So, what I'm trying to tell you, you can't really say that's apples and apples. The only thing I'm trying to say here is that there might be a trend there. That's all I'm saying. So, try to translate that 7% into a local rate, it's not going to be 7, it's going to be much, much, much smaller than that.
Any idea what? Do you have a number?
I'll show you right now. If you look at the bottom right, the 2016 right now is at 18.1. If you compare that to the original 2015, that's a 3% increase. If you compare it to the projection, that's a decrease of 1.6%. Why? Because I told you, I want to back down, because I think there's some windfall there. If you compare, now, this is where a good comparison comes into play. If you compare the 2014 actual to what I'm projecting out, you see a 2.5%. That's the number, that's the number you need to focus on. My gut feeling, it stays there, or it comes down. And based on that sales tax graph, if that trend gets tickled down, I will have to adjust that 2.5 a little less. I think, still might be all right, but still, I want to show something that's reasonable. Does that make sense? Questions?
Yeah, what's the number, then, that, I mean, in answer to his question?
I'm showing a 2.5% increase. That's the number I will focus on.
Okay.
If you want to try, say, okay, we're, you know, stay the 7, well, but the 7 is not a projection. You've got to understand, that 7 is real, that's what's happening now. The 2.5 is what I'm thinking, eh, it might happen, but if that 2.7 currently keeps dropping, that 7 in the future might be a 5 or a 4, I need to change that from a 2.5 maybe to a 1. There's a correlation there. Does that make sense?
Gilbert, just for clarification purposes, your graph that has the fiscal year 2016, that has 18.1 million, and it's versus the fiscal year 2015, that 3% is what you have on your fiscal year budget comparison, and that's at 3%, right?
If you compare the.
Yeah, on this graph?
Yes.
Okay, that's the 3%, but we're comparing it to?
If you compare, what I want, I threw a little extra data, but what you really want to look at is comparing your actual 2014 to what you're looking down the road. That's the number, really, I think you need to focus on.
Okay, because that's the actual?
And the reason why, your 2015, as you can tell, when I will hit that, it's going to be way out there. And if you can try and compare, well, you're projected to your, to your baseline for future year, that doesn't make sense, because you've got a lot of variables there, as I mentioned earlier, that I, there's a big assumption, there's a windfall there, but I don't know if I have enough windfall there, or should be smaller, so I just took the safe side and put a half of it in there. So, the best measurement tool right now is to gauge the future budget, 2016, with the 2014 actual.
Right, right. So, you took two and a half between 14 and 15, and between 15 and 16, you only add in a half, which is the three.
That's correct, the math.
Okay, yes, okay, I see what you're saying.
So, I'm glad you caught that. Basically, what I do, going back to how I came up with the 18, I had to come up with a number. If things weren't happening the way they were, without the gas, what would that number be? So, that, whatever that number I came up with, which you're talking about, I have to come up with a number, and I use about a one and a half percent increase. The difference between that number, I calculate a one and a half, versus the 18.4, is my windfall.
I think, too, just to pat Gilbert on the back a little bit, that, his green line there with his projections, he does a pretty good job trying to take that crystal ball and figure out what that's going to be each year, so it's pretty close in there.
Well, I appreciate that, but also Andrew does a lot of work for me, too.
Okay, Andrew.
So, Andrew has the crystal ball that's in his court now?
Well, my crystal ball is black right now.
What?
I can't see through it.
Well, here it is, first of June, and you're projecting what it'll be in October?
That's correct, first of next year.
2006, 7, 2006.
I think the past two years, I'm not, you know.
Probably a few months.
I think one year, it was on, you know, you get lucky sometimes, in the past two years, we hit it. I mean, off there and there, but there are going to be times where I'm off, you get a recession, oh, guess what, you're off. And then Paul can chime in. Okay?
Well, one hurricane that disrupts commerce drastically for a while.
That's it.
A lot of things we haven't seen.
Hurricane and everything else, can just throw the numbers out the window.
Yeah.
Start over. Anything else on the sales side, that's the primary focus I just wanted. Let's talk about property taxes. The 2014 net tax appraised values, I know a lot of people have received your statement. I had looked at some of the numbers, early numbers, I've talked to John, and it's like, I just, they're pretty large. And I think he was throwing out there, the numbers came out to slightly over 8% increase. I was like, oh, it can't be, you know? So, after talking to John, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be cleaned up. So, I have to use some logic in play. Last year, we had a 6.5%. And I'm thinking to myself, you cut out all the new improvements, forget the new improvements, because that's, that's just new added, but I'm just looking at current existing property, what we have right now. Looking around your economy and everything else, yes, there are some factors going, about the apartments, that comes into play, but they're taxed based on rental income. So, that comes out of the spectrum. So, what is really driving this, is like, is it an eight? Or that's just numbers really are bad right now? Using that logic, I say, I need to back down right now, from, from last year, we did 6.5, I came down with some mathematical, I can show you what I did, but ended up being about 4.7%, okay? That's where I'm starting at with. Is it right? Your guess is my guess, but we'll find out in a couple of weeks. But I'm pretty confident it's going to be within that area, okay? The new construction, we have $89 million, and that came from the, John digged it, digged into it, basically, what you have is about $4 million in new annexation area, which is the Tuscan area in that area, and about $85 million in new construction. Ms. Scott, the reason why we point those out, those are new property that's coming on the tax rule, never been taxed before. So, when we start talking about tax rate, and we'll get into the effective tax rate, which easy definition generates the same incomes as last year because of the appraised value increase, those new items don't come into play. Why? Because they were not in play last year. So, that is like, kind of new money coming online. Does that make sense? Okay.
Sort of like your one-time, not, not.
No, it's not one time, in this case.
No, it's the recurring, but the new.
It's a new recurring, new money. The proposed tax rate, we're looking at right now with some assumptions, looking at everything else, we're looking at about a 57.01%, 57.01 cent. Tax rate MNO, 32.4, debt tax rate, 24.6. I just threw one cent up there to give you a guideline, what's one penny, that's based on a 97% collection rate.
Do you want to talk about that 97% collection rate?
Oh, I'd be happy to, I didn't know if you could catch on that one. In prior years, we've been using 98% collection rate. However, I kept hoping, hoping, this past couple of years, it's been coming at 97%. What I budgeted versus what I actually get from Rena and her collections. So, it behooves me, I need to readjust that collection rate. Does that make sense? It'd be slightly over $100,000, huh?
It could have been an aberration, at 97, and it'd come back up to 98.
It could come back, and that's, I'm hoping, but you know, after two years in a row, it's like, I need to do something. If it comes back, that's, that's great.
Then it was an aberration if it comes back to 98. The 97 was an aberration of short duration.
But Gilbert.
We don't, don't know that yet, but I hope you're right, that it doesn't stay there and come back. Anyway.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Based on that one cent, would it be fair to say that the 97% versus the 98% would be equivalent to that one cent, or not? The 357,000, in other words, we got $357,000 less from one year than what you were projecting?
One way to say it is that I had about a 14 million, 14.1, some change, I'm projecting to come in at 13.9 to 14.8. It's slightly over $100,000 at 1%, going from a 98 collection to a 97.
It's not the same.
It's not the same?
It's not the same as a penny on the tax rate.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood the question. It's not the same, has nothing to do.
Okay.
No, the one penny is based on a, on a bigger number, whatever that number is.
Okay.
The collection rate is based, okay, whatever the tax rate you just decided to come up, times a collection rate 97.
That big number, okay.
So, you got math on top of math. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
So, that explains, and Avalon Tax Revenue went up only $111,000. One, due to the fact that, you know, the tax rate is lowered, and second, I'm reducing the collection rate from a 98 to 97. But still positive, $111,000. Basically, majority of that's because I'm assuming from the new property. Tax rate for 2015 was 58.4. It's a drop of 1.39 cents. In the current budget that we're proposing, I know I mentioned about $2 million, that's because that's what's in, that's what's in the CIP, but based on these numbers, if the numbers come in close to these numbers, we still have a capability of issuing another $1 million, and making a $3 million bond issue to do an extra $1 million in residential. That's even by reducing the debt tax rate. I don't know if you recall, you've seen it, but tax rate, debt tax rate was 26 last year, 25.6, sorry. Oh, no, 26.5, sorry.
You're talking about the debt tax rate?
So, we're able to still reduce a little tax, the debt side, and still accommodate the debt capacity.
Okay.
And one of the, I might as well say this, is that one of the reasons, you know, I've talked to Ms. Garrett, and she has the same concerns, is that you get to a plateau that you keep doing all this debt, you're going to have eventually a debt tax rate higher than your MNO, and then you still got, and every time we do, if we want to do the effective tax rate, the benefit all goes to the debt, not the MNO. So, we can't continue that trend, so we have to modify. One of my recommendations, let's try where we can meet both objectives, where we can lower it and still accommodate a little extra funding. Next slide. The effective tax rate is equal to the proposed tax rate we're proposing run out, based on the numbers I've been working out. Now, what if the numbers come in higher? Well, we should still be okay, because I'm using the effective tax. So, that's why I'm, I'm okay and comfortable in assuming this right now, because if the appraisal values come up, well, the effective tax rate will compensate for that. It might be a different effective tax rate, but I still would generate the same kind of money. If it goes the other way, well, then that's another story, then you might see an increase that really drops down to, that didn't happen back in 2011, where the property's values went down, the effective tax rate went higher, it went higher than our actual, or tax rate we adjusted a little bit to get to that point, but hasn't happened since 2011. Now, the rollback, for Ms. Scott and anybody else, is that the rollback is the composition of state law, and I can go into it, I know you probably love to read it, and I'd be happy to give it to you.
Thank you.
But they allow you to increase your taxes from, from the state side level, looking down to the cities. Okay, you're allowed to increase your taxes, but you're going to only increase it on your MNO adjusted for the effective tax rate, plus your debt, to make sure you're still paying your debt. Those two numbers together will equal your rollback. The only time that number can go up is on your MNO side. So, right now, we have an ordinance that allows us to increase it only by 5% on the MNO side. The state has an 8% increase. I don't, many of y'all, I don't know if y'all read, but there was a lot of talks this past legislation about reducing that down to a 5, we were already there, but it would have hurt a lot of cities that had done that. So, in this case, in making sure we're compliant with the city ordinance, which council has decided to go with that pattern, even though state overtrumps the city, we're still keeping with the consent. I think we did, we had a bond ordinance, I mean, an election a year ago, and we're following the wishes of the citizens, that we want to keep it at 5%.
No, they, they agreed to the state level, council wished to do it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
But, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for, it's been a while.
But council wanted to keep it at 5.
That's correct. So, we stayed at 5%. So, if you do that calc, because you have to do that test, if for some reason you exceed that number, in this case, we're down by 1.78 cents, if you exceed it, well, the citizens have, can petition and have an election, and require the council maybe to put it back to where it was. Does that make sense? That's why the rollback comes into play. From the state perspective, our proposed tax rate is less than the state law by the 2.75 cents. And if this plays out the way it is, besides several citizens maintaining their tax at the same level as last year, dollar-wise, frozen property, individuals who are qualified will see a reduction in their tax. As you recall, we had an election years ago, they were frozen a long time ago at a certain level, and it's been dropping since, so they're going to benefit much more than any regular tax person like myself. Mine will probably stay the same. But anyway, I just want to point that out. If that happens, transpire. So, how is your tax rate money spent? That's the next slide. I'm sorry, any question on the tax rate, none of that? I just created this slide, because I wanted to show council the composition of how the dollars are spent, and where does it go? If this works out, we're looking at 57.01 cents tax rate, of which, 23.4 goes to the MNO, and 24.6 goes to your debt. MNO tax rate, that money, where it represents about 57% of the tax, is collected, and only that money goes to the general fund operations, that pays police, streets, parks, libraries, all that, that's that section. The debt, pretty straightforward, goes to pay debt, as a separate fund. And how that money's paid out, I'm not, I'm not going to bore you this, but I just did a quick analysis, just to show how this would be paid out. Public Safety, we get about 18.17 cents. Public Works, we get about 5.9 cents of the tax rate of the MNO. Park and Recorations, 2.19 cents. General Administration Services Division, 2.26 cents. Development Services, 1.54 cents. Library Services, 1.51 cent. And of course, non-departmental services, 0.83%. Add all those up, that is your MNO tax rate, if it works out, of 32.40. Any questions?
It'd be nice if you could translate that as a dollar amount toward, against the budget amount.
Out of coming. Next chart, I'm not going to repeat, this is basically another way presented from a pie chart, I just wanted to see the effect, where the money's really going. I just wanted you to see the effect, where the money's really going. Basically, if you look at the parks, public works, and public safety, 81 percent of the tax rate funds those operations. That's the only purpose of this slide, I just want to let you all know that. Y'all probably didn't know already, but. Now, I don't know if this is what you're referring to.
Yes.
But I show a table here that shows, okay, if everything works out, I've got a 26 recurring expenses. This does not include one-time expenses. As I mentioned, those are paid with left-of-hand funds. I have a column showing the tax rate associated to each division. I show the corresponding dollars for those divisions at that tax rate, the sales tax, and the rest of the money pot that transfers and all that are allocated accordingly to each division. So if you take the last three columns, the 14 million, 18 million, and 16 million, add up all that, that equates to your total recurring expenses of $48 million. That's how we plan to pay it if things work out. Okay. All right, let's bring this all together one more time. I'm estimating a beginning fund balance. What I mean beginning fund balance is what I expect to end this year, 2015, and start for 2016. We talked about recurring baseline, I mean, sorry, recurring revenues of $48.4 million, recurring expenses of $48.1 million, one-time expenses, 3.5 million, and we're going, hopefully, projected to end up around a fund balance of $12.9 million. As I said earlier, we have a policy maintaining a 25 percent minimal fund balance. If you take, excuse me, the $48 million and add it to 3.5, that equates your total budget, multiply that by 25, it comes out to 12.89109. The excess, $396,000.
You got any plans for that?
Absolutely.
I bet you could find seven different ideas tonight for that.
Why don't we install a gumball machine or something?
My question is, at the 25 percent reserve fund, are we going to start talking about bumping that even more in the future?
Well, as you can tell the numbers, how it works out, and how it all depends on the economy, and also about the growth of city and everything else, right now, it'd be very, very, very hard to increase that number. The only way you can increase that number, you would have to strip something away from some type of expenses.
Are you increasing the tax rate?
Oh, you increase the tax rate. Well, I assume that.
I would cry uncle, because it's gone from 15 to 25 in the last.
Yes, sir.
We'll just figure that 3.96 and put a .0001 out there.
And recapping it, the 2016 budget, we're proposing a tax rate the same level as effective tax rate if the numbers work out. We're assuming a $3 million bond issue, and in addition, we're assuming the $2.8 million in general fund to also go to the street, to the street program. Keep one thing in mind, as those, as you recall, and Ms. Scott, usually later apart in the, in the budget process, I will ask council, do you still want to issue debt? And then usually, everybody say yay. Once that's done, it's done because I need to go into the market and sell bonds for those You can reverse it, but you don't want to reverse it, and people are going to look you bad. It's like, you know, you want to sell, now you don't want to sell it. So that's why I give a full one or two days ahead of time. You said this one we're going to have more than, a few days at least, before we go into market. It's going to be every couple of days, maybe a week, but we need to make, the management needs to make sure you're still okay with this plan. You want to go forward with it. We go, I get the nod ahead, it's not a formal approval, I just need to make sure you're okay before I go into market and sell bonds, and now we've got a big IRRU of $3 million. So that will come in later, in a lot of part, well, actually, the first couple of, first week of September, just to make sure, after we go through other budget work sessions, you're still comfortable with this assumption. And if you say yes, we move forward and we go sell bonds. Does that make sense? You got this look, I just want to make sure.
It makes sense, I'm not going to say yes, just in case.
No, I understand that. It'll come. This, just because it's there, we won't pull the trigger until you tell me you're okay. Does that make sense? Okay. We will continue the current services, as Ms. Garrett mentioned earlier. We're providing a, continue with a CIP, which is basically the 1.5 million in the park building, and the $5.5 million for the YMCA pool. We'll do additional $40,000 and $6,000 in various different park projects, as Kobe, got it right. As Kobe's mentioning in his presentation, and of course, we're assuming the following new reoccurring costs to be added. Again, the pay program, police and fire step program, the career ladder, we add in two officers, one assistant chief, the OPEB trust fund funding, and a cast, it's not new, but it's new money for the carrier effect from last year's pay program. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At one point, we had said something about two extra police officers. Is that already in here?
Those two, not that those two?
I'm going to scope to that real quick.
We talked about the potential of getting four. There is two actually funded in the budget, already in the budget, so it'll be an option if y'all want to add an additional two more.
Was that for a particular division? Because I thought we were talking about.
They'll all go to patrol.
Okay, okay, I didn't know for sure whether we were doing just one specific.
Here's the third one.
You should have a, I'm going to touch on that real quick. Those three items I mentioned, when I first started this presentation, we had two additional officers that were not included. We had some, we talked about maybe a possible adjustment in the pay for a fire and PD, and also increasing the street program for the residential area. There's three bullets up there. Let's, I want to dissect it real quick, one at a time. The two officers, $160,000 in additional cost, it's not included in the current budget. Now, I have a tax rate effect there, yes, but this is a moving budget. Student manager still hasn't had a final conclusion on it, because I still got a couple of weeks to play with. For example, our TMRS rate came in the other day and has been reduced. That can give us some validity to maybe adjust it and possibly add the police officers. So it's not a no, but we're still working on avenues to accommodate that without any tax increase. So just because our tax, and it might not happen that way, so there's other avenues that we can try to make it work. Make sure you understand that. And one of the things I saw this past week, the TMRS rate dropped, that might, and I haven't done full, complete numbers, but there's a possibility we can accommodate that, because I've got one cost coming out, I can replace it with the other one.
Okay, and the, the increase in the street sweeping, would that be additional to the current one that we have for 200?
Yes, ma'am, you may remember, last year, we reduced it, and that's one of the reasons we're not able to get the residential streets like we'd like, so that, that's the 200,000.
On that one there, right now, looking at it, depending on my year-end projection, there's another option available to us that, I haven't talked to Ms. Garrett yet, but I'm still playing the numbers out. There's a possibility you can treat it as a one-time, get it done one year, and revisit it next year. Does that make sense? We add it to the one-time expenses, and if it's not there next year, and there's no room enough, like remember, we start doing the baseline, if something hasn't adjusted, maybe then we can accommodate there if some of the costs went down. That's another avenue option without affecting the tax rate. Now, the fire and PD market adjustment, $400,000, it's, I can't perform magic, that's going to be hard to swallow there. You know, that's going to be new money somewhere.
But aren't we just doing the study, so we wouldn't necessarily have to?
No, Cheryl has looked at market studies on the police and fire to make sure we're trying to keep up with the market rate of what's going on, adjustments around the state.
Okay. So that doesn't have anything to do with the study that we were looking at a minute ago?
No, that, that other study is, would be citywide.
Okay.
Why is it, why is it that if you, if you treated something as a one-time, you said it, it wouldn't affect the rate?
This is a new program. We'll be adding something new to it. You can treat this as a one-time if you know the fact that next year, when it comes to you in 2017's budget, this $200,000 is not reoccurring. I need to take that out, and then council has to make decisions. Do you want to treat it as a one-time again, or do you want to add it back as reoccurring? At that time, if it's added as a reoccurring, it moves forward from that point on as a reoccurring. But right now, you have an option, it's brand new, like, can we go, can we operate without, basically, you look at, can you operate next year's budget without the $200,000? Answer to that would be yes. But you might have some political conversation, that's a different conversation itself. But from an operational standpoint, you still can operate with that 200. That's why you can say, okay, it's a one-time. Now, if council wishes, if things work out, you know, I say it's a moving target, we can accommodate that, and maybe as a one-time, if council understands that's a one-time.
And is a one-time, it would come out of the reserve from?
Yes.
Okay.
Depending on my projections, if, I know I've got a little conservatism, but once I finish in June.
Explain where the one-time money is coming from.
One-time money is that you're not going to spend it again. So let's say you treat this as a one-time expense in 2016 budget. It's in there as one-time. You're going to use left-of-hand funds to accommodate that cost. When you come back, when we come back before you in 2017, that $200,000 will not be showing up as a reoccurring expense. It'll be just, we'll start all over again. How much money we got, how much can we allocate to one-time? Does that make sense?
And so it comes out of the reserve fund?
Yes, ma'am, it will come out of the reserve.
Some things you can stop doing, and some things you can't. You can't stop paying people on one extreme, but you can stop street sweeping.
It's just that, I liked what he was saying, that if you call it a one-time, it doesn't affect anything. Well, then why don't we call all of this one-time?
Well, no, 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 no. No, no, no. There's a rule of thumb, I tell you, is that this thing's not going to happen at five, or if something is operational that you know, it's like, I can call fire and PD one time, and next year, it doesn't make any sense. This here is a, we have a program, but we agree that the level of funding is X dollars only. Now, we're saying we want to add more to it. Well, you want to treat this more as a reoccurring, or maybe as a one-time hit, and then visit again another five years, and there's different options.
Like if we had to catch up on street sweeping or something like that, do you like, get all the residential, and then next year, we could decide if it was going to be that or not?
But my whole key, I'm sorry, Ms. Garrett.
No, go ahead.
My key point is that the first and the third, there's some flexibility, we can make things work, and the tax rate might not be on the table. But the third, the second one there is that, that's going to be pretty tough to bite.
And council may have other projects you're thinking about. I strongly encourage us to, to add the two additional police officers, so we're putting four more police officers in the department. So, but like Gilbert said, with that team, we got that TMRS rate, I think, yesterday or today, yesterday?
Monday night when it came out.
Okay, well, that's, yeah.
Can I challenge you on that? The police department, we get to 100 percent, no vacancies, and before, before we have to make that decision?
No, you can challenge, you can challenge me all you want, but I don't agree with that. I think we need to add the FTEs, and as the chief has proven, he's hiring people, so he had, I mean, if he, if he can get all those people hired, he will. The reality of it is, you're always going to have probably five or six people vacant. That's why we fund the PD payroll account at 98 percent, because you're always going to have a few vacancies, but we need to give him the flexibility to get the manpower he needs, so.
Reminds you, on the property tax collections, and you've adjusted that down a point, are we going to look at something to be more aggressive in that, that 3 percent uncollectible?
That's a conversation we have with the lawyers at the county, yeah. And I think they're trying some different avenues. They acknowledge it, there's been some, there's been some personnel changes down there too, so, so I'll give some time, and I've been.
We rarely see any of those properties come back on. It seems like it takes a long time to get them back on the tax rolls.
It does, takes years.
That's law, there's probably statute that's slowing that down.
Well, you can, basically, we have to increase the line item for that law firm to go after the people who don't pay, and then that takes forever.
You still have a statutory timeframe before you can even take those back.
Right.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of my presentation. I know I don't get a free meal out of this, but thank you.
And I'm just going to recap, too. With the tax rate that we've presented, same services, there's at least three new personnel there. There's two police officers and an assistant fire chief. There's a 3 percent pay program across the board that employees would get on October 1, plus the police and fire step plan is funded within that tax rate. So that's kind of what you're getting for a little over 57 cents, or that's what the public is getting.
I don't want to cut anybody off. Very good. There are some, in my opinion, very conservative estimates, as I would expect, and a lot of things could change, and I think council knows that. We have to wait for that certified tax rule, get some firmer numbers from the appraisal district, and things could change, I think, in our favor. It's always about revenue, it's, you know, there's unlimited needs, right? We all, we have no problem with where to spend it, plenty of streets, whatnot, it's just about how much money do we have available, so. But this is well put together. Thank you to all the, all the presentations this week. I think we're very good.
The department heads recognize that council wishes to have a lower tax rate, and they work really hard to be conservative and streamline their operations. Technology helps us a lot with that. We look at all of our positions when vacancies occur, whether we can replace or let go, and you see that with your savings that are going on. So our department heads do a great job, Gilbert and his staff, Andrew, Billy, Sarah, not Sarah, I'm sorry.
Laura.
Laura sitting back there, you know, they do a great job. This is a lot of numbers, and we've still got another good month, month and a half of crunchy numbers. We will present a budget to you, the first meeting in August, which I think is August 2nd, maybe, whatever, the first Tuesday in August, so you will have the entire budget, and some of the departments will, again, present. We will, the CBB, you asked about the CBB budget, Tony will present on that night, so, and then Cheryl can come back and talk about vacancies if you want to. We've done a great job with our vacancies. I think as of Monday, we had 30-something vacancies citywide, which is about a 5 percent vacancy rate. The department heads went after recruitment strongly over the last 12 months, and it's, it's showing, so.
That's one of the main prime reasons I need to go back and look, because I'm seeing that taper down. I thought there'd be, they're coming in, so I need to reevaluate that, but I'm still okay with it.
When will we have the briefing on the hotel tax? Your assumptions there?
We're going to do assumptions just for the outside agencies next meeting on the 16th.
Okay.
So, so Thomas can, his committee can work toward bringing back to you the second meeting in July, recommendations on what to fund those outside agencies, but we'll do that on the 16th.
Yeah, and again, we'll have a bit more information from that committee on their logic. To me, that was glaringly missing last year, was here's what we decided, so I'm looking forward to that.
That'll be that second meeting in July.
Yes, yes. Council, anything else? Thank you. We're adjourned.